After hearing about his warranty, I think I need to find out if he sells some jail equipment.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Tracy, do you have anything?
I don't. Hopefully we've got a new baby in our office, but I haven't heard anything. And it's my first one to be having a baby. And then yesterday, so.
You bet.
I do.
So did she actually go into labor to have an induced, they give her an inducement date?
Yes, right. I heard from them at four last night, so they were still in the process.
You bet.
And I haven't heard anything yet, so.
Always good stuff. I guess we've got one also down in the public administrator's office?
That's her.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you're just saying for the whole, okay. You bet, that's what I was thinking. I actually didn't realize that until yesterday. Two days ago, sorry. Well, if somebody brought it to my attention, so. May have to change that boomer date.
I know. That's been here for ten days.
You've got some ice you could probably throw in here.
I don't know.
Need a little dilution.
I'm a little bit weary.
You brought it in, take it out.
But I'm getting thirsty. I'm getting thirsty. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Might have some wine.
Could be like that waxiness.
Yeah.
It's current colors.
Look at the dilution of it. Yeah, I would.
Definitely not number one. I'm pretty tired.
I look pretty clear. It'd be all right. I promise you, I'll probably drink a lot worse. And I'm not gonna drink any of that, but I promise you, I probably have.
You gonna make it down to First State Community Bank for a perfect amount swing by?
On Monday?
Is that today or is it Monday?
It was supposed to have been Monday at ten, and then rescheduled to next Monday.
Seventeenth, yeah.
What was the word anyway?
I know about mobiles.
We gave our presentation here.
Are you familiar with those, Matt?
That's one.
Okay, yeah, so it's a, just in a, up here, it's funds that are available through the state at a slightly lower rate of interest for qualifying businesses and through their local banks. And I think they've opened up the agricultural part of that first, before they opened it up to general business. And I think that was a result of probably just the current climate, whether it's the drought, whether it's the soybeans. Of course, we don't have much of that down here, but in the state of Missouri, you know, it's, down, you get down in the Bootyall area, and there's a lot of crop down there.
North.
You know, a lot of corn.
Kinda good.
Yes.
Yeah.
I like it.
I think it's.
Definitely better same just different.
Okay, is there?
Next item on the agenda would be our resolution number twenty twenty-five dash four. And this is a resolution of elected officials of Leclae County, Missouri regarding policy relating to section sixteen oh one oh to sixteen oh three oh RSMO. And whereas section sixteen oh two three one, RSMO provides that a public governmental body is to appoint a custodian to maintain that body's records, and the identity and location of the custodian is to be, is to be made available upon request. And whereas section sixteen oh two six, RSMO sets forth that a public governmental body shall provide access to and upon request furnished copies of public records. And whereas section sixteen oh two eight dot two, RSMO provides that a public governmental body shall provide a reasonable written policy in compliance with those two sections mentioned, commonly referred to as the sunshine law, regarding the release of information on any meeting record or vote. Now therefore be it resolved that the elected officials of Leclae County, Missouri got following policy in accordance with sixteen oh two eight RSMO regarding appointment of custodian records and the location for the custody, control, and possession of public records for the office of the county as follows. A, that the assessor be and hereby is appointed custodian of the records of this office of assessor, and that such custodian is located at two hundred North Adams, Lebanon, Missouri. B, that the collector be and hereby is appointed custodian of the records of the office of the collector, and that such custodian is located at two hundred North Adams, Lebanon, Missouri. C, that the coroner be and hereby is appointed custodian of the records of the office of the coroner, and that such custodian is located at two hundred North Adams, Lebanon. D, that the county clerk be and hereby is appointed custodian of the records of county commission and county clerk, and that such custodian is located two hundred North Adams, Lebanon, Missouri. E, that the prosecuting attorney be and hereby is appointed custodian of the records of the office of prosecuting attorney, and that such custodian is located at two hundred North Adams, Lebanon, Missouri. Yeah, that the public administrator be and hereby is appointed custodian of the records of the public administrators, and that such custodian is located at two hundred North Adams, Lebanon, Missouri. G, that the recorder be and hereby is appointed custodian of the records of the office of recorder, and that such custodian is located at two hundred North Adams, Lebanon, Missouri. H, that the sheriff be and hereby is appointed custodian of the records of the office of the sheriff, and that such custodian is located at two hundred North Adams, Lebanon, Missouri. I, that the treasurer be and hereby is appointed custodian of the records of the office of treasurer, and that such custodian is located at two hundred North Adams, Lebanon, Missouri. Item, paragraph two then, that the respective custodian described in paragraph one above shall respond to all requests for access to or copies of public record within the time period provided by statute, except in those circumstances authorized by statute. Paragraph three, that the fees to be charged for the access to or furnishing copies of records shall be as provided in sixteen oh two six RSMO or as otherwise permitted by state law. Paragraph four, that is the public policy of the offices set forth in paragraph one above, that meetings, records, votes, actions, and deliberations of this body shall be open to the public unless otherwise provided by law. Except to the extent disclosures otherwise required by law, the deeds, records, and votes set forth in sixteen oh two one RSMO, sixteen dot one hundred RSMO, and is otherwise provided by law, shall be closed. That the office set forth in paragraph one above shall comply with section sixteen oh one oh to sixteen oh three oh RSMO. The sunshine law is now existing or here after amendment. And adopted this day of, we'll vote on it, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And it has signature lines here for all the, all the office owners. Having read the resolution, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve and adopt the resolution as said and written?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash four regarding the sunshine policy and establishing who the custodian of records are. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the paper, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same so. We will go ahead and sign ours.
Can I ask a question? So every year, every, when new elected officials come in, does that mean we have to re-sign? They don't have to be re-signed?
No.
Okay, I just end up the reason we must, we're actually signing it because it stays our names now. I, I'm just curious. My statute says I'm the custodian of my own records anyway, right? And I think that probably other office, other officials or the elected officials. I'm just curious, when new incoming elected officials came in, it's gonna have to be re-signed?
It's my understanding, though, I mean, no can ask.
Oh, it doesn't matter, I mean.
Shouldn't, shouldn't be at this time unless the sunshine law changes or so, since it actually does not state your particular name. It just shows that it's what we adopted as that office only. So, yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda would be CDT applications, and we had one here from Lebanon Area Chamber of Commerce, and we had taken up, and we did approve a five thousand dollar previous amount to the chamber, and we did approve a two hundred and fifty dollar membership with the Friends of the Fourth. I've looked this over, and I'm going to make a suggestion for discussion purposes. And before I do that, I would like to recognize the chamber for the work that they do, and the, what appears to be an increase in their membership. So I think they're to be commended for that. However, I'm going to put out for discussion that there was a potential for five thousand dollars more here, their request was actually for twenty thousand. Last year, we approved ten. This year, we've approved five plus the two fifty. But my suggestion for discussion is, in light of the recent government shutdown, SNAP benefits being curtailed, and just in general, what the, what the nature of, of the food banks look like at this point, I'm going to suggest that we directly determine five food banks, and that we distribute one thousand dollars each to those five food banks. And then we can take the discussion up next year, as we go into budget, we can start looking at CDT funding again. If my records are right, over the length of the CDT, the county has appropriated over four hundred thousand dollars to the chamber over that length of time. And I'm sure it's been invested well. But I think sometimes we need to step back, and we need to look at where we invest our funds. And I think right now, with the current climate with the food banks, I would make that recommendation. So I'll open that up for discussion.
I think the food bank thing is a good idea. I mean, I did hear that the government finally, they went ahead and opened back up now, I guess, until, where he was talking there, I guess, until the end of January. I think that's what I'd heard this morning on the news and stuff, so. Which I know they did talk about the SNAP you mentioned there, which they're gonna try to, I think, get some type of approval for that going till September or something, I think that's what it said. But that doesn't help them currently right now. And it's gonna take a little bit for them to get back on and get caught back up at those food banks, so. I think that's a, that's a pretty good idea to be able to help out in a lot of other avenues and, and where they're most needed for that.
I like it.
Okay. And what I would inject there as well, I, I would, and I haven't identified those food banks, and I think that's what we needed, that's incumbent upon us. So it would be five, but I would like to also add that one of those five be a thousand dollar contribution to Hughes Center. I think throughout the course of the year, they have, they've had some increase or expected increases in funding, and I'm not sure all that's come through or not. So I would like to make that one of those one thousand dollar donations to food banks. Another one I would like to see on the list, and this is something we need to agree on, would be the Salvation Army for a thousand dollars. And then we have food banks that come to my mind, and I'm sure there's more than, than what I'm aware of, but we have, we have L Life, we have, let's see, who is the others?
Life Point Market.
Who is it?
Life Point, or, yeah, Life Point.
Life Point Market, so we could consider them?
Yeah, cross lines.
Cross lines, okay. Okay, does the Free Store do anything with food banks?
I think they give out food at some point, I think.
I don't know if they interact with the others.
Yeah, I just think theirs is just kinda hit and miss or in a certain timeframe. Best I know, I, I, just what I heard, I don't know.
Theirs is always open, but I, I don't know how they receive it.
Life Point is the only USDA designated food bank in Leclae County, because we have one, we have one, and they're the only USDA one, so.
And that thousand dollars probably helps them draw down more funding, so they can use that and multiply that. I'm sure it's through USDA, so.
Yeah, that's a good one.
We can, we can do this at the pleasure of the commission, we can take a, take a motion to approve the concept, and then we can designate as quickly as possible what those others would be. Or we could do that right now, so if we look at Salvation Army, if we look at L Life, if we look at, well, Life Point and Hughes, that's four. So that would leave one opportunity out there.
With that being said, I mean, do we, do we not think about a couple of the other senior centers that's in our county? I mean, the Stoutland and the Conway, and maybe, since they're a little bit smaller, could we split that and get five hundred each there to help, or?
So, Joe, I guess anything is up to, to consideration, okay? In our budget, we have annually allocated a thousand dollars to Hughes Center and three hundred to the Conway Senior Center. To the best of my knowledge, we've never allocated anything to Stoutland. I don't, I, I don't recall ever seeing that in our budget.
I know they set just inside our county line, but I know they get most of their residences stuff is from the Camden County side, so.
Yeah.
Conway is a split like that between three counties too.
Yeah. Okay. So I would ask you, does anyone know another one then that would be worthy of consideration? Linda, do you have another one? Can you come up with anyone? Okay.
Do warming centers in the area, I've heard of them down here, warming centers, do they offer food and also warming places during the cold season?
What I understand is they volunteer, they have volunteers that bring in food for us.
Okay, okay.
Food trains.
Food trains.
The other thing we could do is we could increase to twelve fifty, those four, if we're unable to come up with a fifth one. We could increase those to twelve fifty each.
The literacy council also runs a food drive for Shepherd's Pack, and putting together six dollar meals for folks and families. So, we've got one, two, three, four here. Attention's.
We've got four that I thought we was all pretty well online with.
Yeah.
So.
Here, and, here you've got those.
So we, we could again do five one thousand with one not yet designated. We could do four at twelve fifty, or we could do two thousand to the USDA, if that helps them draw down more money, and I don't know for certain whether it does or not, but it would kinda make sense. Or we distribute it again equally among those four, or designate those four with one to, to be determined. Wouldn't be my recommendation to do that necessarily, but it's a possibility.
That, will be a question for Becky King, she's over the Life Point Market. About the USDA, how that would work with, for them, but she's the contact.
Yeah, I like the idea of the five thousand dollar donation deal there, and it may be, I mean, we're in thoughts with, I guess, if we don't have something else come up, you know, to look into and visit with Ms. Becky, Jennifer will say in there and see.
And I guess if you look at it sliced it another way, and if Cross Lines and Free Store are still two options, if we did five hundred apiece for them. So I think I would, I would entertain a motion to approve designating five thousand dollars from the CDT funds to the support of local food banks. And those that we've mentioned would be Salvation Army, L Life, Life Point, and then not a food bank, but a provider of meals would be Hughes Center.
I'll make the motion to approve five thousand dollars towards that cause.
Would you want to designate, Eric? I, and I know I just threw this out here for discussion, and probably didn't do enough research on my own to know exactly how many food banks there were that we would consider, but I wonder if it'd be good that we go ahead and designate today, and we can, we still have items on the agenda which we could take up, and then maybe we could do just a little more research. But I would like to get this in the hands of those food banks as soon as possible.
Yes.
You know, I, I think that's part of the, my reasoning to suggest this and offer this.
I'm ready to designate three, for sure.
Okay, and those are?
Life Point, L Life, and the Salvation Army.
Okay.
That are all food banks.
Okay.
I understand that Hughes serves meals, but I don't know that they are a food bank.
They have to buy meals, okay? So in, in the sense of their resources, they do have to buy the ingredients to put together that meal, that they do serve, and they do deliver meals on wheels.
That's true.
And so I, I guess technically, do I call it a food bank? Maybe not, but I, but I do think the underlying issue is the need to have these resources available at this time.
Okay.
So I would, I would like you to consider keeping them on your list.
I would definitely consider it with, I, I would like for it to be designated probably to the Meals on Wheels, if that's a possibility.
So I think it could be a request, but I, I hesitate attaching strings to something like this. They know where their needs at, and if it's buying food, whether it's Meals on Wheels, and I think that's great, or whether it's there at their facility. But I think management at would be best left to them, because they know where the need is the greatest. And, and I don't, I just.
And I don't either.
But I do believe there is a need there.
How much is left in the CDT budget?
I didn't, I didn't look at that, Eric, but, but specifically what I looked at was, if we reinvested this amount, this was what I was focused on. I wasn't focused on depleting the CDT budget for whatever amount it is. It was to redirect funds to what I think we're agreeing on is a worthy need in our community right now.
Well, I don't want to be the one that designates the one that wasn't worthy. So if there is some funds left after the five, I'm gonna recommend that if we see another need or another organization, that that goes towards that.
Okay, so would you be willing to separate those two issues so that we have one clean?
Yes.
Um, vote on the five thousand, and then that other can be determined what that might look like between now and the end of the year?
Yes.
Would you be willing to do that? Okay, okay.
So I've got four here, who's gonna get the rest of it?
Well, I think what I'd like to do is, let's do some research before we adjourn, and maybe call Cross Lines, maybe call the Free Store, and any other organization that we can, we can think of. And then, and then, and then before we adjourn today, I would, I would like to have this completed, so again, that we can distribute those funds.
Now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So can we let this live in for a few, few minutes?
I'd say, yeah.
Okay, now everything we've all been waiting for, health insurance, removing. So what we know is we had two proposals. We had a renewal from our current vendor, Anthem, and then through our agent, they also presented a option to go with Cigna. And if you look at those two, and I think we've done some preliminary review when these were presented, I think we probably had individual questions, if you made any calls on your own to check out, to get questions answered. Then it looks to me like the option would be, everything would remain. I'm not gonna say everything's gonna remain the same. Let me look at it before I misspeak. The deductibles from the current Anthem to their renewal is five thousand. Cigna is five thousand, Family ten, Cigna's ten, co-insurance is ten percent across the board. The out-of-pocket max individual on both quotes are seventy-nine hundred. The Family fifteen eight. Preventive has a zero copay. And Linda, if I misspeak any terminology, let me know. Primary Care is a forty dollar copay. Primary care is a forty dollar copay across the board, and that remains what it was. Eighty dollars for a specialist, zero for telemedicine. Seventy-five dollars current and proposed. For urgent care, seventy-five dollars. Emergency room is the deductible plus three fifty on the Anthem renewal, and on Cigna, it's three fifty.
Can you repeat that last statement?
So if you look, do you have your book with you?
Okay. It's in that book too, it's.
If you look at under the benefit, uh, paragraph or tab. The emergency room currently is the deductible plus three fifty. And that is the renewal quote from Anthem, and then the Cigna is three fifty. And I always try to defer to HR on some of these things so that I don't misspeak. So Linda, would you want to, uh, tell us what that, what that really means on that column there?
To which, the emergency?
The emergency room, yeah, where we have a deductible plus three fifty, or we just have three fifty?
Currently?
Currently, we, we have deductible plus three fifty.
And we have a supplemental.
We have a supplemental.
Deductible.
Okay.
Portion of it.
Okay.
So while that's true for Anthem, because of the supplemental, it then covers that statement.
Okay.
But then there for Cigna, it's just straight three fifty, there's no deductible plus.
Correct, so in turn, what it's saying, because of our supplemental, the employee would have zero.
On either one.
No.
No.
And Cigna would be three fifty, because it's not saying deductible, it's saying there's a three fifty charge.
Okay, and we can't use our HRA to cover that?
We don't have Cigna HRA.
Well, but if we went with Cigna, we would have Cigna HRA. So I guess, let me rephrase the question then, so.
I know that currently, the employee pays nothing.
Okay, but if they utilize our HRA, it's possible they would pay nothing with Cigna then.
Possible.
Okay.
I just don't know.
Okay, let's see if we can, because I'd like to make a decision on this today. Let's, uh, you wanna, do we need to call Stephanie or get Robin in here maybe, and, and see?
Yeah, because we're going to have that same conversation down here when I wrote in the prescription or the specialty.
Prescription specialty is defined. It is twenty-five percent with no cap at Cigna.
Okay.
That we've already checked on.
And I checked on that, and, and you'd have to have a drug that's fourteen hundred and one dollars. Before you would pay any more on Cigna than you would with the Anthem quote.
Okay. If that's the way that's going to, that's, because the way it reads, if that's what's true on that for that statement. Then this other, if you're for your emergency room, will be the same. That's what it's written.
I was curious on the specialty prescription, so I reached out to Stephanie at Navant. And I had that conversation with her yesterday, I believe. If you look at twenty-five percent of fourteen hundred, that's three fifty, so that's, that's where those lines would intersect then. So any drug over fourteen hundred dollars, then it would, it would, it would be more out of pocket for us as individuals.
And is that like fourteen hundred dollars for one bottle of pills, or is that a year's worth of pills?
Or one treatment?
Per, it's per prescription, if I understand.
Monthly prescription? Sixty, however the prescription is, probably, yeah, yeah.
I thought my glasses were dirty, but I think mine's are getting bad.
I know that feeling. Here, read, read that bottom line.
Well, I've got my glasses on, and I might be able to.
Is it the same price per family?
So, good, good question, no, please, no, no, in fact, you, you, we all have an investment in this. So the, uh, with currently, the family rate with, you want family or just with spouse, you want family?
Just family.
Family, okay, current is, uh, two thousand sixty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents with Anthem. Uh, their negotiated renewal, so that's what we'd be looking at. They presented us on a, what they call an original renewal, but then they came back with a negotiated renewal. That would go to two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. If Cigna is considered, then their family's one thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. It's about, uh, a, uh, on a, uh. Monthly change. The, our employer cost, and, and of course, we don't know how many people are going to sign up, family or children, right? No, no, no families.
I mean, honestly.
Well, you know, and, and I, and I met an individual yesterday that we all know, and I won't mention their name, but, uh. They had to buy insurance yesterday, and it was eleven hundred dollars for an individual. So when you look at what we pay for a spouse, you know, it was about eight hundred dollars, so, you know, insurance is not free. Although some people think it should be, but it's not free, and it's not cheap.
Yeah.
So, uh.
I was just curious, I mean, I keep, I keep laying on Joe's because there's no way that.
Yeah.
I could afford to put lane online, so Joe's is so much cheaper.
Yeah.
But that's just why I thought, well, it'd be nice if we could ever get, you know, ours. Cheaper to where people could actually, you know, insure their kids. Because I know a lot of people here don't even have insurance on their kids because they can't afford it.
Yeah.
So I just didn't know, like, if maybe we would, like, raise our, you know, get rid of the zero deductible, you know, if that would change.
You know, Chrissy, I, I think, uh, I think that's going to be a discussion for next year. I think that as we maybe see what happens over the course of the first six months next year, with whatever the government might or might not do. We're really going to have to have that discussion.
Because I know in the past, I mean, I've been here forever, I know in the past, like, we had different options. You know, like where the employee could pay in, where I could pay in to make my deductible zero, but you know, the deductible stayed at five thousand or whatever, you know. And so it made it more affordable at that point to have family or whatever on, because we had options for all the employees. But I just didn't know if that would anything that we would ever look into again.
I think one of the things where I've looked at this from is about, what was it, four years ago or five years ago? The commission at that time decided that we would pay a hundred percent, right? And the commission in its wisdom on that day, and I was part of that, I won't say I was the wisest part of that, but I was part of that. Made that decision, and once, once you kind of go down that road, and then you start to kind of claw things back.
Yeah.
There's, you, you meet with resistance, but at some point, the resources we have available, and it's, if we go into budget, and we look at the various. Increase in cost, uh, you know, all these things have to be taken, you know, obviously, which you know, in, into consideration. You know, our work comp, uh, ninety thousand dollars more than it was last year. Hundred and ten thousand dollars more than last year, you know? Our property and liability up about thirty, thirty thousand, so we're trying to look at areas that we can be. Save, you know, have some savings to try and make, because as you know, our sales tax is relatively flat at two percent. And, uh, I think when we go into budget, you know, we're going to hear requests for more law enforcement. You know, I talked with Sheriff Frederick about that, and I, I've been very candid, it's, you know, those are going to be difficult. Line items to come up with, you know, in the budget, so, um. We, we just have to look at it from that, from that standpoint. You can't take one item out and say, okay, this is only a two percent increase or two percent decrease, we've got to look at the whole picture. But I like your idea, and I think it's something that we need to consider, and I think next year, that's, that needs to be put on the table.
Give us options, you know, I think it's great that you guys do pay a hundred percent, but I also feel like it would change the price for everyone else. Give us options to where we could, you know, choose what both employees and see what their needs are. You know, not, not everyone in my office is going to be the same as what everyone in Linda's office.
Yeah, I, I think what we run, and, and I think that's a, a great idea again, and if, if it were me. Just me, then I would like every individual to have their own direction on what they want their healthcare to look like. Much what is some of the conversation at the federal level right now. Uh, instead of one size fits all, uh, let's, let's break it down to the individual, let them decide. But unfortunately, with the, uh, the world that we're in. We can't offer Jennifer one thing and, and Christie something else, but ideally, that's the way the system should work. It just isn't designed that way, so, you know.
Did you read the spouse, um?
I, I didn't, but I will, so currently, Jennifer's, uh, it's fourteen oh three fifty-two. The negotiated with Anthem is fourteen forty-five sixty-three. So what you're seeing there is, is an increase if we stay with Anthem. And then if you look at Cigna, uh, the spouse is thirteen fifty-five sixty-two.
And remember the employees in that too.
And there's two, and pardon me?
The employees in that also.
Yes, yes.
Which we pay.
Yeah.
So it would actually be less than our portion on both of them?
So the, the current per employee, if the county pays, not the HRA part, just, just what we're looking at right now. Is seven oh seven seventy-one. The negotiated renewal, seven twenty-eight ninety-four. Cigna's six eighty-one seventy-three. So you could subtract that from that previous number and come up with, yeah.
Thank you.
The difference roughly, roughly in these two proposals. Is about a sixty-five thousand dollar difference. I, I understand what you're saying, but if you look at the premium difference, it's about thirty, thirty-five thousand or so. Up or down? Is that true, Eric? Up, up or down, you've got the calculator there?
Yeah.
It's, it's approximately either a thirty-five thousand dollar increase for the county, or a thirty-five thousand dollar decrease for the county.
Renewal versus Cigna?
Yes, roughly, yeah.
And that equates to sixty thousand dollars.
Spread.
Spread.
Would that, is Cigna within the doctors that already have, or would that be like a change?
So, uh, that's a good question, and, and we've asked that, and we've been, uh, we've been assured that all of our current providers. Are, accept Cigna. Now, at any given time, a doctor can opt out, I think. You know, when we went to, uh, I don't know, three or four years ago, I know I was seeing a particular provider in town at that time. When the county purchased the insurance, uh, my provider didn't know whether they could take it or not. So I changed to, I, I found a different physician, and I went to where I could be assured that I had coverage. One of the things that we learned during the discussion with Navant was the MU, are they cup, are they part of the network? And we've been told that they are, and I think that's important because Lake Regional has, uh, kind of a partnership with MU. And I know I've went up there for procedure before, and so I think that's, uh, good. Because MU provides a lot of services that maybe, uh, aren't available locally necessarily. If you're in that network, I mean, if you're in Mercy or Cox, obviously, but, um, but that was one that we were, that we were assured was in, in the. And the only thing that I like. To have to work through, let's see, let me make sure I say this right. Uh, the only thing I like better than buying, uh. Health insurance might be work comp, work, work comp's a passion for me. It is just, it is a passion, I do not, I. I can get, I can get very. Incensed.
Cigna will not allow it through the supplemental.
Cigna will not allow.
Confirmed.
Confirmed, why?
You did an extra effort.
Why?
That you'd have to go to Cigna for.
No.
We do have employees using the special treat prescriptions, just so we're aware.
I don't like, I don't like that answer. Pardon me?
I, I'm having a hard time getting past the sixty thousand dollar difference.
Yeah.
I'm leaning Cigna.
What is that, what information you just got there, how does that affect there where it's not using the HRA, right? That what you said?
That's the emergency room.
It's, uh, so the Anthem will, um, be covered through use of the HRA. And Cigna says we can't use our HRA to cover the emergency room, and I'm like, I don't like that.
And then the specialty prescription is capped at three fifty currently, and it will no longer have a cap.
Right, but you have to get to fourteen hundred before that makes a difference. I wasn't, I wasn't, that information wasn't shared with me, I was told that we didn't have. With, with, uh, in my conversation with Stephanie, because I, I was looking at that. And that was a question I pointedly asked her.
I thought you did have somebody that was using specialty.
We did, but, but what's the amount of that would be the question?
Yeah, that would be.
So my, my question was, where is the, where's the, where, where those two intersect? Okay, because Stephanie would explain to me, I said, okay, I have to use illustrations. What's a five hundred, what's a thousand, what's a two thousand, what's a five thousand? And we, and we come back and we said, okay, fourteen hundred, twenty-five percent of fourteen hundred is three fifty, right? So if you look at, it's going to be capped at three fifty, uh, if twenty-five percent of fourteen hundred is three fifty. Anything over that, then would be out of pocket by someone within our plan. But up to fourteen hundred, it's, it's the same, same money.
Same difference.
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
Fully got a topic, but where do we have with my air?
Well, as you can tell, ours doesn't work any better.
We, we think, we think. Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
After the deer season weekend.
Yeah, too.
We have received a, there's been a purchase order issued. There was trouble with the manufacturer to locate the board that we need to be repaired. But Mike has secured and been confirmed what that cost is, and a P.O.'s been issued. Now, timeline of getting apart here, Christie, I don't know, but that was, you know, those.
The, and the heat is probably not as bothersome. They shut the air off. I don't hear about heat. It's off. Now it's just whether or not it gets too cold with the heat though. That's what I was thinking, you wouldn't care that.
It seems like that could work, huh?
I think that'll be a big help.
I think we gotta try it. Yep, you know, we've been down that road before.
I think it's gonna get problems.
So, and with Ryan here with, you know?
Did you do, oh, you're talking about down the road, freezing up, down there?
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe he's talking about, because I heard, you know, knew that we had a bulk tank years ago. I'm seeing a bulk tank here when I was working on road bridges, the doors. And everything, but then I don't know what happened or transpired, and it left. But I, I don't.
I think there was maybe just some shrinkage that or, or maybe not a shrinkage, but it was like how it was allocated so that we could know exactly did it go to this crater or whatever.
Exactly, and that's one of those things that I don't think that, that nobody gets in that except for fuel truck. That way we know exactly, because we got our sheets and stuff that allocates that, right?
Yes. And there's the lady over there that gives us the fuel sheet report.
That's what I'm saying, so with that being said, then, then, yeah, whether that be our road foreman lets our fuel truck in.
Whatever morning?
And you have to have bulk factor on the occasion.
Yes.
So.
You do, and you will, because you'll be comparing it to hours on the machine.
Exactly, but.
I don't know about that terminology. Sounds like some collaboration going on over there.
I'm wanting straight, I don't want to blend it.
You want it straight? Brian seemed to be okay.
Was straight, too?
He seemed to be okay if it was someone funded, didn't he? Did I miss that?
Yeah, but like you said, you're gonna get to that point that you're, you're going to, second time he's called me. Bob's auto. Like, he liked what Mike was saying, like, yeah, what Mike was saying there. Eventually, you blend it.
Sure.
You blend it here, and you put it here, it's diluted again. And then you go here, you dilute again, and then you get to that point. What have we really done? Or if we're gonna try it, I wanna make sure to try it 100% all the way.
It's gonna have to be managed.
Exactly.
Because, because you've got a grader out there on the road, and the fuel drivers gotta get around, and.
What I mean by blended, I don't wanna come into us blended.
I see what you're saying.
Not at the outset, for sure.
Right.
Now, after it's all then.
When we get it here at our tank, or whatever we have, and it goes into our truck, then it goes into our equipment. Yes, that's, that, yeah, I don't wanna run straight fuel, I don't wanna burn my.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what matters.
The first tank though's gotta be straight.
That we get in a bulk tank.
So why do we pay an HRA if we can't determine where it goes? I'm not gonna give up on that one. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna let that one go. If, if, if I have an HRA and I can't use it, now I know there are some exclusions, I can't use it for dental or vision. That's what I'm told, but I don't like that answer. If, if it's an HRA and it's for, for necessary visit. Not that all, not that all emergency rooms are necessary, but is there something else there that if you're admitted, does it cross that?
No, no.
You know? Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, no, I know it's not. I'm saying, senior captain.
Okay. So.
It would be nice to know. Who went to or what went for?
Or is it just that if you go there?
Question, I don't think I've got a question yet. Toby?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, because it's a copay, so, yeah, I would think so, yeah. It's under copays. So, yeah, the assumption is that.
Let's see if we can get James or, or somebody on the phone. Can I use your phone, or did I need to go get mine? Or we'll use Joe's?
Yeah, it's totally gonna be best to call. I don't know that I have James's number. But when we ask for that.
You have Stephanie's number?
But I can get it.
Okay. Joe, can we use your phone or? Yeah, or is it mine, I put on the charger.
Yeah, it's low. No, it's, it's good. If I can get it right now, I'm gonna have to wait till that shuts off for us, you're gonna answer it.
You're upside down, you gotta get that right side up.
I've got it right side up. You bet it. All right, who we calling?
Well, Linda's gonna call us.
Hurry up and wait. Who are we trying to call, that's what I'm asking.
Is it 41722835365?
Is that who that would be? See, this contact is right there. 3565.
You would not have to dial a 1 for that if you were on the landline.
I didn't dial a 1. I just dialed 417.
Highly maddening. If I dial a 1, let it go.
That's what the number's in here to contact us.
Welcome to the phone now. Is not available. Please leave your message after the tone.
Yeah, it's like one I called yesterday, has to do with some stuff.
I'm gonna take a quick, quick mic here.
Asked for some help, and I wanted to talk to a real person and stuff like that. Finally ended up telling me, due to an overwhelming call volume, we're unable to take your call, you're gonna have to come back at a more, you have to call back at a more convenient time. And they hung up on me.
Convenient for who?
Exactly.
Well, I guess I'll go to the bathroom.